Good evening. Welcome to our regular board meeting tonight. It's October 1st, 2025, and the time is 6:58. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm going to ask you to remain standing. I'd like to take him and I'd like to take him silence to honor hero. James Montanero, who is recently protecting our children, was in a critical accident. So if we could have a minute to remember him, honor his service. We will now move on to citizens comments. Okay, wasn't on the trucks. All right. Do we have the vote?
Ms. Martinez Santiago. Present. Mr. Cristo.
Present.
Ms. 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 Jarenza.
Present.
Mr. Creed.
Present. We now have citizens comments and Noreen Clayton. And just so you know, we have, we have we have almost a full citizen comments. We have 30 minutes allocated and you're the first up.
On September 17th, I came before this board asking for bus transportation for my granddaughter, Journey Hunt, who is a fifth grader at Smith Elementary School. When my granddaughter attended the Early Learning Center, AKA Smith Elementary in kindergarten, living at the same address and distance from the school she was bussed. Again, I'm requesting transportation for several reasons, two of which are the six tenths of a mile she has to walk to get to school. I also spoke about the dangers of walking on the arterial, walking on the arterial imposes. I equated it to walking next to a highway. As of today, I have not heard anything in regards to my quest for requests for bus transportation. Fast forward to this past Monday, September 29th, the crossing guard at Smith Elementary School, who was trained to cross people, cross people across the arterial was hit by a car. And unfortunately, he passed away, not to minimize his death, but suppose a child was walking with him. Then we would have been looking at two fatalities instead of one. Tuesday, the day after the tragic accident, there were two crossing guards, three police cars with their lights flashing to slow the traffic, numerous grief counsellings because counselors, because many of the children, including my dear granddaughter, saw the body of the crossing guard being resuscitated on the ground. And even the school superintendent showed up. If the situation wasn't so tragic, it would be almost laughable. Why do I say that? Because it took someone dying to shed a spotlight on the dangers of the arterial. It took someone dying for the police to slow the traffic flow. It took someone dying for the school, for the school superintendent to show up. As of today, there are two crossing guards, but there was only one police car. The response to this tragic situation shows the city of Poughkeepsie School District, Police Department and the city government having a knee jerk reaction instead of being proactive to the situation. All three entities knew of the dangers around the school, traffic on the arterial and drug activity, and yet it was deemed safe for elementary students to walk. What happens when the music stops? What happens when the press go away? What happens when the story fades from our memory? Do we go back to business as usual? One crossing guard and zero police presence? We are putting a Band-Aid on a situation that requires stitches. Smith Elementary School is the only school in Poughkeepsie with a unique location. It basically sits next to a highway. My proposal is busing all the children that attend Smith is the only viable solution to me. It eliminates the possibility of them getting hit by a car. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. How are you, Jones?
Good evening. Valeria Jones. First, I want to honor the memory of the crossing guard who lost his life while protecting our children, James Montanino. I stood before this board on September 17th, 2025, and warned of the dangers children face walking so close to the highway without proper protection as well as the crime infested area. I specifically suggested more crossing guards and police presence within the radius. You have the children walking and those requests was ignored. The school board responsibility is student safety. Your negligence led to the preventable loss of James Montanino. I am demanding that this board take immediate steps to secure safe patches for every child. By installing protective barriers, assign additional crossing guards and requesting city state transportation support, more police presence within the radius. Waiting longer will only risk more lives. Community deserves to know why warning went unheeded. I'm calling for a police report, for a public report on why actions wasn't taken sooner and what accountability measures will be in place moving forward. We cannot bring back the life that was lost, but we can prevent this from happening again. Every day that passes without the change is another day our children walk in danger. This board must act now.
Thank you. Jermina Topololo. Sorry about the pronunciation.
Good evening. I'm Jermina Topololu at 12 Lilling Road. Earlier this year, months ago, a group of parents, I among them, gathered in Krieger's library to participate in a district hosted reconfiguration presentation. Numerous parents pleaded for traffic changes, including pedestrian crossing lights along the arterial portion at the front of Smith School, and cautioned of the very tragedy that happened this week on Monday, September 29, when a crossing guard was fatally struck by her vehicle on that very road. At said meeting, I asked, which level of government maintains the arterial? To which I was answered, the city of Poughkeepsie. The same answer provided to every parent who listed problems about the arterial. While perplexed that a road traversing towns and counties is under municipal jurisdiction, I trusted the answer. Yesterday, a parent's square message was published referring to the arterial as a state road. And there was the answer. Our district wasn't spending time with the right policymakers. In recent hours, I dug myself in a rabbit hole in search of traffic studies of Poughkeepsie's arterial roads to compare to the timeline of our reconfiguration planning. The only and latest traffic study I could find conducted collaboratively between the city, county and state was called Poughkeepsie 9.44.55 and closed without solutions in 2022 before reconfiguration planning. In the district's public documents, I revisited the child safety zone study, exclusively requested by our district, conducted by Franklin Essex Hamilton Boses and presented to the BOE on February 19th, earlier this year. It is an analysis sheet that lists hazard types along walking routes to Smith School dated January 23, 2025, conducted by Paul Overbaugh from F V H Boses. Under the section Hazard Type Highway Intersections, Mr. Overbaugh put an X on the line, stop sign or traffic signal without pedestrian lights, and assigned the section 29 hazard points out of all 37 points in his findings. The findings were seemingly ignored, otherwise we would have had pedestrian crossing lights, considered months ago, not yesterday, hours after someone lost their life for our children. Our school district needs to be fully accountable to our community safety and be expeditious in connecting with appropriate policymakers. Tragically, while the matter is urgent now, it was urgent long ago. Thank you.
Paul Brenner.
Good evening. Paul Brenner, South Grand Avenue. Last month, I was here to voice concerns that I had regarding Krieger Elementary. Those concerns included trash around the school, broken playground equipment, and morning drop off procedures. I'm happy to report I have seen some significant improvement, but more needs to be done. Consistent expectations for parents to follow the school procedures and traffic laws. I'm also happy to report Ms. Barrows responded to my concerns and continues to do so. It's refreshing to have a building principal take my concerns seriously and work on solving problems. Following that last meeting on the morning of September 18th, I noticed the morning drop off had been reconfigured to have buses drop off in the front of the building and parents drop off in the back from Whittier Boulevard. That made a significant positive impact on traffic flow and safety. However, this week I've noticed more parents now avoiding that weight on Whittier Boulevard and now coming around the block again and going to the front of the building. U-turns have come back as well as buses being blocked from entering the bus only entrance. On September 29th, one parent actually ran over one of the safety cones near the bus entrance and got it stuck under the undercarriage of her car. She drove from the bus entrance to the front of my home, which is approximately a couple hundred feet. I didn't measure exactly. It took her and one other individual several minutes to get that cone out from under the undercarriage of her car. That safety cone could have easily been a small child. Following that incident, I sent Ms. Barrow several pictures showing cars parked on both sides of the street, one where a school bus couldn't get in the bus entrance because cars blocked the bus from doing the wide turn needed to get in there. I also sent her pictures of cars doing U-turns and stopping traffic. Unfortunately, I was not able to get a picture of that parent with the safety cone under her car. On a positive note, I'm happy to report the trash situation has also improved significantly. While I haven't personally witnessed it, it appears building, excuse me, it appears building custodial staff and grounds personnel are routinely checking the grounds and picking up trash. I'm hopeful that eventually the broken playground equipment will be replaced and also that these concerns about child safety, not only from what I'm telling you tonight, but from what you're hearing from other parents, take it seriously. We already lost a crossing guard. It could have been a child on that arterial. It could be a child on Krieger Avenue, could be a child on Clinton or any of the streets in this city. Thank you.
Samuel Rogers. Sorry for the mispronunciation.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Samuel Rogers. I'm here to discuss a concern regarding transportation of my four-year-old child. Despite school doors opening at 7:50 and closing at around eight o'clock, our school bus arrives at the stop at 8:30. That will result in my child reaching school after nine o'clock. This means that she's missing approximately an hour or more of instruction daily, which is unacceptable. I've been taking her to school myself so far, but unfortunately I can no longer continue to do so. Furthermore, the bus ride home is excessively long, about two hours. I followed it myself and she's four. I can't have her on a bus for two hours and we live seven minutes away from the school. I've been in contact, well, I've tried to get in contact with the Transportation Department several times via email since the beginning of school. And I finally received a response yesterday. I spoke to someone and I was just informed, sorry, there's nothing that we can do. There's no buses available. I just find this response unacceptable, especially considering the impact on my child's education and well-being. If it was a kindergarten student and this was next year and she was an hour late or hour and a half late daily, it'd be a CPS concern. So I'm just requesting that the board will take some action to address this because just the response of there's no buses is unacceptable. Thank you.
Thank you. Peggy Seals.
Good evening. My name is Peggy Seals and I live at 64 Catherine. I actually did not prepare anything, but I do have it in my mind, what it is that I want to say. It has to do with the transportation. Unfortunately, my child was one of the kids that went from Morris to Clinton. We live approximately 15 minutes away, despite it is more than a half a mile. And consistently we've been told that there's no route. I've also put in an appeal to which yet I have not heard anything. So I would really need for, you know, the school district and including Bus Right to come up with a solution because unfortunately it's going to be a very detrimental situation next month, especially for her going to school. It's, it's, there's no school crossing guards at, you know, Mill and also at, we live at Mill, there's, she has to cross at Mill and she has to cross at church and also Maine. So yeah, I would need my appeal to be reconsidered. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Kellyanne Royce.
Good evening. Kellyanne Royce, Edom, Lindbrook Road, Poughkeepsie, New York. So I too condolences out to the Montanino family, also to Keith Williams, who's a dear friend of mine who oversees the crossing guards in the city. I've checked in with him a couple of times this week and a lot of trauma and I just want to remind the community grief shows up when it wants to. And so we can't not pay attention as we move forward. Just a few things for this evening. First, I just want to cover what I didn't get to state last time. It's not a secret. I'm an educator and I've been checking on Olas to see if the special education director position has been posted. And as of today, it's not, and I'm questioning why. We hear data, we hear, we hear some information. Why not? Considering the data and the things that are in front of us, that is definitively a director position that needs to be posted. So I wanted to put that out there and hopefully it's going to be posted soon. The community is asking, where are we with the the projects, the capital projects that are going on, what are updates? So I'm hoping we'll be able to hear some in the very near future. I'd also like to offer the opportunity, maybe that we can offer citizens to be able to walk through the buildings to see what's happening. Hoping we're also going to hear about the AIS plan very soon. It's October 1st. We heard about AIS and Dr. Simpson's piece last week, so I hope that's coming. It's good to hear that the gentleman behind me got some follow-up, but it appears that, including myself as a citizen, where's the follow-up? Is it being tracked? What are we doing? We need to follow up, otherwise people are going to continue to show up. I lastly just want to say this evening, and I had other things, but I didn't want to run out of time. Everything you're hearing about the busing is why I voted no. We weren't ready. There wasn't enough data. My questions were never answered. And now here we are. We have to do better.
Thank you for your comments. LaShawn Anderson. Bray.
Good evening. My name is Mrs. LaShawn Anderson Bray. I want to give condolences to the crossing guard, Mr. John, Mr. John and his family. However, I'm here, I came here the last board meeting and I heard with the other parents were saying, it was frightening coming from another state. It was very frightening. And now I'm going through frightening things of just enrolling my daughter as a transfer student. I feel like she deserves better. I feel like there's more adults pointing the finger at everybody and having excuses of why you all are not getting the job done that needs to be done for these students. I'm feeling like at this high school, they are more, they're treated like bodies and not humans or people. Like when I went to go take my daughter, to drop her off for the first day, I was mortified. I, I, I thought I was at the wrong place. I thought I was taking her to jail. I'm going to be honest. Then you have more security on the inside, but what about the outside? Every day daily, I'm standing there with my daughter who is supposed to be accommodated busing, which once again falls on you all. She's accommodated busing. She's disabled. I'm here longer in this state dealing with all this school stuff for my daughter. You have all these children that's cutting in the front of the line. These children, when it's time for a release, they just out like herds trying to unlock their phones. That's not safe. And yes, crossing the street, not just a child, I look like a child. I'm scared to cross the street. I'm scared and I'm not even from here. You have her information incorrect. The first time I brought her information to the Board of Ed, then I had to take it to the high school. I just, I'm not understanding. Is this like pure laziness or incompetence? Or is it the label and the ego? And for people, when they sit here and they say, well, I'm a parent, everybody's not parents for the same reason. Some people have children to hold on to a relationship. Some people have children for all reasons. I'm here about my child's education and her accommodation. And if I have to go above you all, I will, because you guys have a title and you're getting paid. Where is the funding? Where is the safety?
Thank you. As we conclude the address, I had something that I was supposed to read before, but I'd really like to read it now. We respect all the opinions that are being put forward. We can't respond to your questions on the floor and your concerns. So what we're going to pay more diligent attention to is following, follow-ups at future meetings and responding to the comments if we can and assigning them to staff members. And we just want to make sure that we recognize that as a community, we, it's paramount that we come together in hard times and as we do, and we really appreciate those comments. And we, we have the rules and we will be making efforts to either contact you or reach out or do more broader presentations on some of the concerns you brought up. And in fact, tonight, our busing is going to do just that because we heard you, we're trying. And I just don't want you to think that, you know, we don't pay attention to the three minutes. And thank you very much for your participation and your comments. Thank you. Mr. Mont, it's your, you're up next for the superintendent report.
Thank you, Mr. Creed. And I thank each of you who are present this evening and spoke and shared your views and thoughts. We did have a tragedy and a tragic incident on Monday. But I want to share with you that safety of our students, faculty, our staff, our partners, and in this case, we partner with the city of Poughkeepsie, who supports us with our crossing guards. We work in collaboration with the mayor's office. We have had several meetings with the mayor's office to ensure that the hotspots across the city of Poughkeepsie are provided with crossing guards. And one of the reasons we offer transportation is because, because of some of the measures and comments that were made tonight. Our objective is to minimize, if not eliminate completely, the dangers of students walking to and from home to school. There are certain elements of that that we have no control over. For instance, for instance, I've shared that we work in collaboration with the mayor's office who hire our crossing guards. And we will continue to work with her office, our partners at, in Albany as well, who are working with us to explore some future options to expand the potential of offering transportation to more students, and particularly those who reside between the arterials inbound and outbound. So I, I do appreciate your comments tonight, but I wanted to share a few words regarding the transportation comments and the understanding that was made tonight, that Smith is that one school that reside as stated equivalently on a state highway. And with that said, the Department of Transportation, we have to go through them to make certain changes or any changes on the arterial because it is a state highway. So we would need our partners to work with us moving forward in any provisions or adjustments that need to be made. I wanted to share that with you before we began superintendent report this evening. We are now day three, full implementation of our Bus Right app. We are welcomed this evening by a group that's online that's going to support us. I'm going to ask Ms. Lakai and Ms. Rogers to make their way to the microphone. Ms. Lakai, you can join her as well. We have Ms. Amber and Mr. Dunn that's online. And today they're going to walk us through the full implementation of the Bus Right app. The information, the value of what parents, district leaders, building principals and building leadership can see. And how best our app can guide the decision-making of our parents with the estimated time of arrival of their morning and afternoon buses. So without further delay, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Lakai and Ms. Roger. And they will introduce our partners from Bus Right that who are online this evening. Ms. Lakai.
Good evening. Tonight, we're going to be presenting our partners Bus Right, who are our routing system for the transportation services and Ms. Amber. And I think they have a new individual tonight, which I don't know the name, but I apologize. Ms. Amber is bringing her partner, who's going to be doing the presentation tonight on the Bus Right routing system.
Yes, good evening. My name is Phil Dunn. Very nice to meet.
Welcome, Phil.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Thank you, Mr. Creed and Dr. Mont. Thank you, members of the Poughkeepsie community. I'm Phil Dunn, co-founder and chief product officer here at Bus Right. I've been here since the beginning, I like to say. And our platform is very simply stated about safely mobilizing our nation's future. And I'll be very brief, but quick fun fact about my background is I actually was a kid who grew up in the Bronx, New York City. So I spent some summers with family members and other family friends in Poughkeepsie when I was a kid. And it's a great community and certainly I have a lot of fond memories giving me a little bit of an escape from the Bronx coming up to that community. So it's a real honor to present this to you this evening. Just to speak briefly about Bus Right, it can simply be summarized in terms of a tripartite experience. Bus Right is a technology platform supported by practitioners who also help your community. The core of the Bus Right platform is the school routing table or the district routing table. The stage in our web app that we're very proud of, that we use with many customers all throughout the country. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in a moment. Once routes are populated and routes are populated, I remind everyone, according to district policy. Once routes are populated and routes are populated, I remind everyone, according to district policy and other district considerations, routes are then broadcast in the parent app. And when you ask what is broadcasting, each bus is outfitted with a ruggedized tablet that operates in the most intense sunlight down to, I believe, negative 50 degrees Fahrenheit, which hopefully I don't think it gets that cold in Poughkeepsie. Each tablet on the bus broadcasts that location to those parent apps so that the parent apps are now subscribing to the routes that your students are enrolled on and you can see the location. So this is a very simple idea, but the magic of it is that it provides more predictability, more stability, more transparency and partnership between parents and the school in local parenthesis, as we say in legalese, lawyer in past life. The school district that is in custody of your children during the day. So again, just to recap, it's a very simple experience where routes are designed. Then a bus has a tablet, your child's bus has a tablet that's saying, hey, here I am, here's where I am right now. And every two seconds it's reporting that location. We have several incidents in our company's history where we're able to provide enhanced safety. We're able to support law enforcement. We're able to support emergency responders because every two seconds we know where your children are. And your mobile phone, iOS, Android, then subscribes to the locations that your students are assigned to. So that's the simple idea. We do this all over the country. We started in the Northeast. We're actually, I'm a native New Yorker, my partner, my co-founder is a native New Yorker, and we spread from there. We were one of the first, well, actually we were the first, truthfully, company to put tablets with turn-by-turn navigations on school buses. When we started, this was illegal in most states. And the irony is, the reason it was illegal is because decision-makers and policymakers felt that this was unsafe. But when you asked what the alternative was prior to technology like this being used, the most common alternative was drivers driving and having a paper, what they call route sheet, which contained the information of the route, information about the students assigned to each stop. And they would try to look at these route sheets, especially newer drivers that were not familiar with the communities they were driving in. And we, we were always of the opinion that that was less safe than having a device simply tell a driver where to go. And a driver can minimally interact with it, either just visually look at it if they need help with the directions or simply just listen to the audio cues and stay focused on the road and transporting your students safely and keep their attention on each and every student. So when we started this, it was illegal in most places. This is now legal in virtually every place in the country because we were in fact right that this is a safer idea. So we have high retention rates. We praise ourselves on putting communities, students, staff, educators first. And I'll tell you why. I started this company, fun fact about Bus Right. I was a, in my past life, I've done many things, but in my past life, I was a chief information officer or CIO of school districts. So I always reported to a superintendent for the better part of a decade. And almost every week I would spend my, uh, a long night at the school board meeting much like this. I was a CIO of a particular school district whose Board of Education, listening to the community and wanting to be responsive to its community, said, we're going to align to the emerging consensus on the science of student sleep. And we are going to change start times. This is back in 2018. And the school board commanded us to implement a change to start times in the district I was serving in. Unfortunately, the timeline in which they commanded us to do it did not allow for much planning. It didn't allow for a budget cycle to shake through and have a, you know, a, a plan for the next year's budget, maybe defer it out a little bit so you could properly allocate all of your fiscal resources. They just threw us out into the pool and said swim. So we went in this district and we changed the school start times and moved them back. And this was a district in the Northeast, not far from Poughkeepsie, not terribly far. And unfortunately, this was a much closer, a district much closer to New York City. The traffic that happens after students have been asked to go to school, these are what we call peak adult commutation times. And our students were running on average two hours late to school every day because the busing was now late and overutilized. And I'm sorry, I have a young child who is getting settled in for bed right now and he likes to sing a little bit. So I apologize if you hear a little bit of noise in my space. But with that said, this went horribly awry. I was in the local newspaper with my boss's superintendent almost every week. And they were saying that we didn't know what we were doing and frankly, we looked like idiots. And at the end of that experience, I felt, I said to myself, geez, I'm, I'm surely going to, you know, probably have to find another job because this is going really badly. And why was the tech guy involved? I always had a dotted line transportation director reporting in part to me and primarily to an operational leader. Because a lot of what we do today with student transportation, especially from a planning perspective, is technology infused. So I had been managing, you know, the routing and management of fleets for a long time. And here I am in this predicament where I had to find at least a million dollars extra to cover the increased cost of the contract for busing, now that I moved school start times. Kids are getting to school late by two hours a day and the whole community is calling for our head. So a woman who worked for me, who is now my dear friend, said, I have a kid who wants to meet you, my neighbor. You're looking at the person that was then that kid. And he comes in to meet me and I say, you know what, things can't be any worse. I'm going to clear my day and I'm just going to spend the day talking to this kid. And he had a vision to impact his community by turning around the concept of busing, which largely works like trains, right? Whether someone wants to ride a train or not, the train goes on rails, it stops at every stop. And he said, what if we could have demand pull forward the busing? Because I was in a district, for example, where on any given day, less than 30% of my high school students rode the bus. But in applying district policies, I was paying and planning for 100% of those entitled by policy to ride the bus. So I was spending far more money than the students were actually utilizing services. And I still had a shortage of buses at the same time. And I said, this is a great idea. You're onto something, but the world doesn't quite work like that. And I explained to him how the industry worked and what the technologies were at the time. And I said, the really big idea here is that school districts are great at providing whole child development. School districts are phenomenal at making sure an adult who is conscientious cares for each and every student in that environment. Your teachers know your kids and you know that. School districts are great at that. School districts are not necessarily the world's greatest people at software development, logistics, routing. I mean, we have great, very great routers. I, I want to give them all praise and compliment, but the organization itself is not built on that premise. School districts as organizations are not built to perform operational tasks. Yes, sir.
So just give us, uh, the quick of the value of the Bus Right app.
Yes, sir. I will speed it up to a conclusion. So the story ends with us deciding to make this resource. And the point of this all and me sharing this with you is that the company in its DNA fundamentally understands the challenges you face each and every day in student transportation. We have met them as practitioners and we continue to meet them as folks who support school districts. So there's a person in your local community that we work, not local Poughkeepsie, but nearby that we work with, Mr. Brandon Caldwell, who's a very well-respected transportation director in your area, as are many transportation directors throughout the New York State area. I just wanted to play this brief video so he can share some of the value of the product. And then I'll speak directly to some of the more in-depth features and then I'll wrap up. My apologies, I thought I had 20 minutes, so I paced for that.
What I love most about Rexburg is the diversity of the town. My name is Brandon Caldwell and I've been involved in student transportation for over 20 years. This is the best school district I have ever worked in, hands down. And I have a team of really good dedicated drivers. I heard about Bus Right about four years ago. It just simplifies the whole process of moving students from point A to point B on a daily basis. Because Bus Right's product is going to tell us turn by turn where to go, where to stop to pick up the kids, what side of the road our stops are on. I definitely think it simplifies the parent's life as well. Through the parent app, they can track the ETA of the bus. It's less than two second delay on the update on the map. And so the parents are really getting to see in real time where that bus is on their child's route. If you're short drivers and you need to be able to cover multiple routes, you can go right into Bus Right and temporarily merge those routes and it'll show up onto that driver's tablet and it'll redirect them. Bus Right is impacting the student transportation industry in a way that we haven't seen in the past. I feel more than a customer, I feel like we are truly part of the Bus Right family.
Thank you for allowing me to share that brief spot with you. And just to kind of wrap up and keep hitting play. All right, there we go. Just to wrap up on two key features of the product. They are the live map, which is most relevant for administrators in the school environment and the parent app. And this will be very brief, just to share a little bit more. The live map allows you to track the progress of buses running routes in real time. We used to call this the Bus Right Beehive because it's a really cool webpage where you could just see if you have 80 buses, 200 buses, 300 buses, the little yellow and black icons look like bees and you can just follow them. And there's a coding, a subtle coding with the color to indicate the timeliness of each of these buses. So administrators, your transportation director, principal, school secretary can easily understand what's going on with the fleet of buses that are assigned to your school or your child's school and be able to quickly give you a sense of what's going on with this live map. I'm sorry about that. There we go. I'm just going to quickly play this. It's not, everything goes wrong. You plan for everything to go wrong and it does. So here on this screen, this is more of a build out of a live map. And you see all of the buses within that community with subtle color indications to show what is going on with those buses. And just to go further, the location of the buses can be subscribed on the parent apps. And the parent app is very simple. It lets you know where the bus is. It lets you set a rule. For example, we know many communities, parents often say to us, hey, I need to know whether it's five minutes, 10 minutes before the bus is coming. So I can tell my kid, finish breakfast, run outside. You can set those things in the app and have the confidence to know when the bus is going to be there, when you need to prepare. And this is different from our competitors, which often would do what they call as a geofence, where they just simply say the bus is in the area, but they don't tell you where it is. So you get confidence to know the precise route of the bus, the precise location of the bus, and you know where exactly your child needs to be and how well you need to secure them to accomplish that. Additionally, we also have other products like cards that allow your students to scan on and off that give you then the confidence that your child actually got on that bus and actually disembarked at school. But I won't go too deeply into our product suite. The last thing I just want to share with you guys is we also have scheduled and live ETAs. We let you know when your child's bus is supposed to get there. So those old mailers that many districts do, you might put a little quick card or send it home in a folder with a kid to say, this is their stop that they're assigned, et cetera, et cetera. All that information is persistent now in your parent app. And then you can get the live estimated time of arrival or ETA, going back to the real-time positioning that I had just talked about. So again, this is a very, very simple idea that has a big impact in school communities and now 35 states. And I will end with this quick and easy demonstration for parents in the audience. When you are asked to go in to your iOS or Android App Store, it is going to be this simple to use the product.
Hey there, this is Abby with Bus Right, ready to explain how we've made it easier, safer and more secure for parents to log into the Bus Right app for the very first time. Here's how it works. When you receive your invitation email from the district, download the app from the App Store or Google Play. Open the app and tap get started. Then choose I've received an invitation. Enter your email address, the same one your district has on file, and we'll send you a six-digit verification code. Check your inbox, grab the code and enter it back into the app. That's it. You'll have instant, secure access to real-time bus updates for your student. No more links to keep track of, no expiration to worry about. The new login flow makes onboarding faster, simpler and more secure for every parent.
So to members of the audience, members of the school board, Mr. Superintendent, parents and staff, thank you very much for your time and attention this evening. Uh, I just want to thank my colleague Amber, who is a person who provides routing support to districts, including Poughkeepsie. And, uh, I just want to thank you all for being good partners and I'm looking forward to better serving the community in concert with you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Uh, quick question for, uh, either yourself or Amber or even members who are with us today. On the app, the administrators from the district and building level may see buses that are, um, tardy or late. So speak to us about how, uh, Bus Right, uh, uses that information to analyze and, uh, make adjustments to the routes.
Awesome. So good evening, everybody. My name is Amber Montserratte. Thank you, Phil, for touching up on all of the important parts of what it is we have to offer. Uh, Mr. Mott, your question of how that works as far as, um, being able to identify issues of efficiency, safety, um, you know, all of the concerns that we have for the day-to-day. The app brings back information based on how the drivers are driving. You know, are, are they staying the course that allows them to stay on time? Are they starting to see patterns of traffic that may be holding that up? Is there, um, a need for, um, you know, adjustments to the route in order to either stay timely and/or maybe there's construction in the area and we need to then, um, remove, you know, some of the stops and move things to a different location so that we can be efficient and be safe? You know, all of that information comes back because we're able to see on that live map where the drivers are at all times with those students. Um, and then we're able to look at that end of the day route and say, okay, did they do exactly what we asked them to? And if they did, why didn't that work? And then we can then readjust in order to make sure that the time fits and matches. As a matter of fact, some of that I've been doing this week. I've been noticing certain patterns and maybe some of the lower level students getting on the buses. Um, so we're constantly making adjustments to make sure that those kids are getting to school on time. And, and while that is a work in progress, every day that those tablets are running in that bus, they're giving us feedback to see how we can be better, um, you know, and how we can do better and adjust.
Thank you, Amber. Can you also speak to, before I turn it over to the board members for questions, um, the responsibility of the bus drivers as they pick up students, as they, um, may take a dip on alternative route? Are they supposed to click on a button? Are they supposed to, how are they supposed to note and log any changes to their route?
Absolutely, yes. So Bus Right has a lot of amazing features that I absolutely love, um, to be able to get the feedback from the drivers directly. Um, we have a stop notes section in the tablet where the drivers can then put notes regarding the students that are on the bus and maybe particular behaviors and/or maybe particular things that they're seeing in the area for traffic patterns or, you know, they can say, you know, we wait an extra five minutes at this stop because we're constantly behind a garbage truck. And then maybe I go in, look at that, take that feedback and reroute that bus so that, you know, we move a couple of stops around so they're not hitting that traffic um, at that point, all of the time. There's also at the end, um, when they close out their tablets at the end of every day, they're allowed to give us feedback as far as like, can you move stop four to stop five because this is happening? Um, all of that is great feedback, but it's, it's in real time too. So if I'm looking at the routes and the driver stops and puts that in there, I get an automatic, um, alert on my end that says the driver's giving feedback and we take that feedback and then we integrate it into what we need to do the next day in order to make that, that work. Not all negative feedback, sometimes it's great feedback. You know, it's like, um, hey, this, this route's working better now that we've made the adjustments. So being able to have the communication, not only with the drivers, but also with the parents, being able to communicate with them that the bus is five minutes late. Um, being able to, you know, let them know why the bus is five minutes late. Or being able to send out notifications for larger, more important, um, either safety issues or delays in the notification center, sending out an email to, um, through the app to say, you know, um, unfortunately, this is what's going on. This is how this is, you know, going to play out today. We're going to be about 20 minutes late. Please continue to monitor your app or maybe we're running a little bit early. Whatever the issue is, being able to bridge that gap of communication is, is huge in making us more efficient and also just being able to relay the important messages as they're needed to be, um, relayed.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Creedon, board members. I'll let you take it from here if you have any questions for the Bus Right team.
I'm just going to ask a quick question. Is there an on-time report that we'll eventually see that we could share with the community that says we're, acts like, like the aviation industry?
Absolutely.
And when do you, how long will we have to run for that, in your opinion, to start to be a daily report as, as opposed to the startup report?
Ms. Amber?
Yes, so we, um, as a matter of fact, we did some percentages yesterday for the first day of the rollout, um, in order to see, you know, how things are working. Daily, we are monitoring that. We can produce reports. I mean, uh, monthly, we plan on giving efficiency reports to, uh, Mr. Mott and Lydell. I mean, monthly, we plan on giving efficiency reports to Mr. Mott and letting him know how things are running. But those can be on demand. I mean, we're watching this consistently, you know, daily. So if there's anything, if you were looking for like a weekly update, you know, or a monthly update or a daily update, we certainly can provide you whatever information that you need. In the system itself, your transportation department has the ability to watch the Live Map and see those patterns in real time. So, you know, it's, actually, along with your administrators, everybody who has access to that has the Live Map. So they'll be able to also monitor for, you know, are those buses running on time? But we can provide any reports that is, you know, you request.
Batima, do you have a question?
I'd like to defer to my colleagues and be able to come back.
Okay. Eleanor?
Yeah, in regards to the offline and online, can you explain that for me? So that's one thing. And also, do you get feedbacks from the parents? I mean, you know, regards to comments from the parents in regards to their children and how the app works? Because that's important, to hear back from the community in regards to the bus app. Don't get me wrong, it's okay to hear from the administrators, but just knowing that the parents have a link or, you know, where they can make comments or what's going on. Who do they direct those comments to? Does it go, where does the feedback go?
These are such really, really great questions. I'll take the first one. Let's start there. So as far as, can you ask that first question again? Yeah, Phil, can you want to?
Sometimes the app has offline and online. So can you give me an explanation of when it's offline and when it's online? And then the second one was the feedback from the community.
Feedback. Yeah. Online, you have that, Phil?
I can start and if there's anything I missed. So thank you so much for your question, board member. And the app was designed, because as you know, cellular connectivity across the United States varies. So there are times when, due to whatever carrier we're using in that particular market, we lose connectivity back to the cellular carrier. The app then automatically adjusts to an offline mode where it continues to provide that navigation experience and then it constantly pulls to see if it gets a connection. So it could send word back out that, hey, here's exactly where we are. And when it cannot do that, what it will display to parents is that here's where the bus was last seen, here's the route and the estimated time of arrival. And then inevitably, you almost never have a lapse in connectivity for more than a few minutes. So there is some modicum of communication back and forth. But we designed it this way, again, just to summarize, due to the variability of conditions throughout our nation or even within a city. Like there are places in Poughkeepsie, I'm sure, that you say, hey, I never get a reception there. So thank you for that excellent question. The second part, and I know Amber has a lot to engage with there, but I will just say briefly, we monitor our App Store ratings obsessively. So, and someone, please hold me to this. If you put in a poor App Store rating, don't do that if you don't feel it. But if you put in a poor App Store rating, someone from our company generally reaches out to you within forty-eight hours. We monitor App Store ratings, we monitor social media groups associated with all schools we serve. We ask that parents additionally provide feedback to the Transportation Director of the district, who is never shy about giving us that feedback. And Amber, if I'm missing something, please jump in.
No, I think one of the things that I would like to touch up on as far as the offline, too. Sometimes there is a misunderstanding of when that tablet goes on is when you can begin tracking that vehicle. So sometimes when parents look, they think, okay, well, it's offline, which means, you know, there's a problem there. The tracking of the bus itself only happens when that route is started. It's very important for that bus driver not to start that route too early, otherwise we'll get misleading ETAs. And they have to pretty much be, you know, precise with when they turn that on. So if it has not been turned on yet, then a parent or guardian is looking to say like, oh, wait, the bus, I can't track the bus. That's most likely because that route has not started yet. At that point, I would then try to communicate with the Transportation Department or, you know, maybe allow for a few more minutes, but to try to figure out what the delays are. If the department is aware of a delay and it's something that we can relay back to you, then they're going to be sending out notifications. This bus is running a little bit late. But I do want to urge to not look at the app too soon and assume that it's running constantly for you to be tracking that bus. It only tracks the route that the child is assigned to in the time when the tablet is on. And as far as parent communication, I mean, communication is key on all levels, right? It just, where communication is important is to know who to put that communication on. So Bus Right does not do certain things. As far as like reaching out to your transportation department in order to, you know, for day-to-day delays, things like that. We are in charge of routing, making sure that the routes are efficient, monitoring, you know, how the routes are running, making sure that the tablets are working well and all of those things. But I urge you to go through the Transportation Department so that they can make sure that they're pushing the important things off to who can handle them quicker. So that instead of like messaging to Bus Right, we're going to help you with the app, we're going to help you with those things. But if it's like an eligibility issue for your child, then that's something that needs to come out of the Transportation Department. And then they'll relay it to us so we can then route the child if they're then eligible. So just making sure that we understand where the communication needs to start in order to get the most effective turnaround.
Okay, so parents can reach out to the Transportation Director. Mr. Mott, who is the Transportation Director?
Ms. Roger?
Okay.
And we have a very good, you know, communication going. Ms. Roger can reach me anytime. She can also reach my partner, Marissa. You know, we're always there to support them, but there may be things that if you went directly to Bus Right, we wouldn't be able, we'd still have to volley it back to the department. The department is truth. So we want to make sure that it comes out of there so we can be as helpful as possible.
Thank you. I think you may have just answered the question I had because what I've noticed in the past two meetings is parents wondering how we determine the distance from their home to the school. Is that something that Bus Right does or is that something we do here in the district?
That's a great question. Yeah, the district has set up the policy. There are boundaries that are embedded into our Bus Right system that we will follow. So the boundaries that are set up based on the eligibility of each student are already in our system for us to be able to calculate and then add those eligible students. There's differences in eligibility. A student may be eligible for something else, maybe an IEP, maybe a 504 plan. So outside of just regular education, there are different levels of eligibility and that should go through the department itself. And then they would relay that to us and we'd make sure that those students were routed safely and efficiently. So the boundaries are built into the system based on the, I think it's the circumference around the school of attendance based on their home.
Okay, so then maybe this question is for you guys about eligibility. What are we, because I've heard a lot of the parents saying that they're using, they're putting their address into Google Maps and they're finding that they are within the distance or the bounds for the hub transportation. My question is, what are you guys using to determine the distance? Is it not Google Maps? Can you give the parents what you're using so they can use it to figure out the distance?
Mr. Cavan, thanks for this question. We appreciate your question. Last year, for the last past year, the district worked on a child safety zone and we went to the voters to approve the child safety zone, which was determined based on the radius, point five mile radius.
What do we use to determine that point five radius? What maps are we using?
I am going to defer to the Transportation Director, who's going to give you details how they defer on their end.
Okay, when you use the Google Map, that will give you turn by turn, whether you're walking or driving. That is not how you do it. The way that it is, is basically here is the school and the point five mile radius casts a point five mile radius circle around that building. If you are outside of the circle, you're eligible for a bus. It doesn't take into account your walking, how you get there. It takes into account the point five mile radius.
Okay.
And that honestly makes it more fair than trying to say point five miles walking distance. Because Johnny walks this way and Jill walks this way.
More fair, I would probably wouldn't say more fair because I think we would be servicing more children, which would make it more fair to service more people. So the distance, my concern is that if it takes, my concern is this radius, right? And if we're driving or if we're walking, like how did we let the voters know that the radius is going to be? Because in my mind, and I'm pretty sure every parent who's been here is mine, it's about the distance from their home to the school and not necessarily the socor radius. So I understand the socor radius, right? But how do we determine or how we make it more fair, right? Because to me, that's not equitable to the entire district. If we are only looking at a circle and not looking at the distance and the time it takes. This woman came up here, I know exactly where she lives, at sixty-four Catherine Street. You have to cross one archerio, which she's correct, there is not a crossing guard there. She has to cross Main Street, which is correct, there is not a crossing guard there. And then she has to cross Church Street where there is not a crossing guard there. So why are we not looking at the distance of walking? Because we're a walking district instead of a socor radius to benefit more people?
Let's talk about the radius and how we came to that conclusion.
Right. Hi, I'm Dr. Janet Bisti. I'm the Director of Curriculum Instruction. I was one of the folk who were trying to work on the reconfiguration project. When we worked with Mr. Overball over at Boce's, he helped us to determine like how these things are done. Unfortunately, because I think of the coming up with the safety zones, the safety zones was really where that radius came from. And that safety zone, when we think about where our aid comes from, they're not looking at walking distance, they're looking at distance from a school using that radius. And so that's the reason why we had to use that sort of circle around the school and determining the distance from the school. It's based in, from what I understand, that safety zone, I don't know what it's called, safety zone information that would allow us to get aid back from the school.
So is there a map with this radius that is public?
Yes, yes, there is a map that is public and it's also on the report that Mr. Overball provided to the Board of Education when we put it to the voters.
And for President Creedon, this is Attorney Reed. If I could just interject for a second, just to clarify the legal landscape here because I think there is some confusion just about how we came to the radius. And I just want to make sure that everybody is on the same page for how we got to that point five mile radius. So New York State education law typically only permits transportation if the student is located more than two miles from their building. Okay, from their school building, that's the default. And that is all the state will authorize us to actually transport under state education law. Now, the exception to that rule is that if the board undertakes what is called a child safety zone study using a, you know, approved analyzer, analyst of the safety zone and analyzes certain factors that feed into a child safety analysis. If that analysis is completed, the board has the authority to then go to the voters and ask for authority to provide transportation even to children who are located closer than two miles to their building. So that is the study that was undertaken in conjunction with a transportation expert by this board last spring in compliance with the education law. We commissioned a child safety zone study because the concern was we were opening transportation to the whole district for the first time in the district's history. And we wanted to make sure that if we were doing that, that we were encompassing the broadest class of students possible that would be protected by that transportation. So the board commissioned a child safety zone study in order to analyze whether there was the potential to make that case to the state that we could justify providing transportation to a broader class of students. That transportation study was presented to the board back in the spring of 2025. And ultimately, the conclusion of our consultant, I'm sure Ms. Lakai will be aware of the particular theory and can correct me if I'm stating anything that's inaccurate. But my recollection of that study was that it concluded that essentially the entirety of Poughkeepsie was a child safety zone that justified providing transportation to any student who was located more than point five miles, which is of course a much shorter radius than the two miles that's authorized by state law. So based on that recommendation of the transportation consultants, the board put a proposition before the voters to authorize providing transportation to students, any students in the district, as long as those students lived more than point five miles away from their homeschool within that radius that Ms. Rogers was speaking to. So we obtained approval from our voters to do that. It's one of the tightest transportation radiuses, radii in the state. And the voters approved us to provide transportation to that much shorter radius. So as a result, we, that is the maximum authority that the board has from its voters at this point to provide transportation. In order to go to a shorter ratio, we would have to commission another study and there would have to be a justification from a Department of Transportation standpoint to justify shortening that ratio. That is not something that the board can legally do without further study, approval of state ed and submission to state ed, and then also approval of our voter base. So I just wanted to clarify that, that it's not the district that made the decision to establish this point five mile radius. That was determined through a transportation study.
I'm, not to interrupt you, Kate, but I was a voter during this time and that wasn't clear to me as a voter.
That's why I want to make sure everyone knew how we got to that conclusion.
Lawyer to explain this to us, then that means most of the community was not aware that they would not benefit from this, from this bus system. I think that in a city that is five square miles, five square miles big or wide or long or whatever you want to say, point five, point five of a mile or half of a mile is not servicing. And not to say that this is anything on us, I don't think we properly informed the voters as a voter that the majority or the, a larger group of students wouldn't be serviced. So I think we, this is not to say anything about the bus system because I think this Bus Right system is great. I think it's positive. I think it's, I have anything to do with the system. I'm really talking about the practice here at the district and how we are determining. And if we are doing, how we are addressing appeals. Because like she said, if her child is an hour late to school and she's missing time, I think we should be doing more to service more children. And that's, I'll just leave it there. Even if it's point six of a mile or, I don't know, there has to be, we have to figure out some way to service, to service more kids. So if that's doing another study and another vote and informing people properly. Because like I said, I wasn't informed that this was going to operate this way or that it was a socor radius. I just assumed as a person with a brain who uses Google, that if I put my address in here and it takes me from here to there, that this is going to be the distance and that's who's going to be used. I think we didn't, I think, and I'm going to say we, even though I didn't vote and I wasn't on the board, but as a board member now, we didn't do our job in informing the public as to what this is going to do and how it's going to affect them. And I'll leave it there. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Cavan.
As a user of the Bus Right app, I just want to say thank you to the Bus Right platform. It is extremely beneficial when it is operational and when it is online. I will report that a lot of families have noted that the app can be consistently offline. So there might be ways to address why those apps might be offline. And there sometimes are delays with notifications. So parent might get a notification that says, bus route C has arrived. But that's maybe like twenty minutes after you've already picked up your student. So is there a way to address the notification systems and delays with those notifications?
Yeah, thank you for those comments. Those are really important things to bring to the table because I think that, you know, this is all new to everyone, right? So the bus drivers are learning how to operate the systems, things like that. We just had another training with the bus drivers regarding timing of hitting the stop so that that doesn't happen. It's kind of like what I said before about if you turn the app on, say your first stop is at seven forty-five and they turn their tablet on at seven fifteen, it is then informing the parents that the bus is ready to come to you, right? So we're working with the bus company and the drivers to make sure that they're not doing things that may trigger the system to miscommunicate. And then also, I do believe that there was a small issue and we went back for retraining about those specific routes being turned on for visibility for parents. So you should not, the good news is you shouldn't be seeing that offline unavailable routing due to them not being visible. And we're also working with the drivers to make sure that their actions with the tablets are, you know, giving accurate information as far as like skipping a stop. If you skip a stop and they don't, you know, identify that they did do that, then it's not going to update the system to tell parents. I know there was one instance that was reported that the bus looked like it was about an hour late, but it was really running on time. I know there was one instance that was reported that the bus looked like it was about an hour late, but it was really running on time. And it wasn't due to the, the driver doing anything, you know, um, he wasn't coming late and he didn't do anything wrong. He just missed a step in the process. So, you know, uh, that's part of the learning curve, but we did hold a, a special extra training session recently so we can avoid some of those things and all of the routes are turned on.
Would you be kind to explain how wonderfully you explained to us when the drivers uh, pass the stop sign and they don't stop, how would that affect that timing?
Yeah, and that's pretty much what, um, what I think you're, um, talking about here. It's, um, you know, if the stops are meant to be one, two, three, right? And then continue on. So, you get to one, you have to identify either you're driving, you're stopping and the the, um, stop is going to ping in the bus that, and the tablet saying that we've arrived and then you move on to your next stop. But if you veer off and you don't hit that next stop or hit skip to identify that you're not doing that, the, the tablet's going to continue to think that you're still going to where you needed to be going to begin with. So, it, it's basically all about recalculating and just making sure that the drivers are doing what they need to do on the tablet to identify that they've moved on from that stop. I don't think that you should have that issue going forward.
Thank you. And I want to just reinforce again that Bus Right trained, uh, our drivers twice now. Like for, and they're beginning to continue to train them as much as they needs need until this gets corrected. Thank you.
I did have one more question, just real quick. Is there a way to review your driver as you would an Uber? Five stars to then highlight who's doing an effective job versus who might need some more training. Um, I think parents would definitely be interested in engaging with that.
Yeah, Phil, if you want to go ahead and touch up on that.
We did this for years internally. We would love to partner with you to figure out a way to do it in a way that's respectful and productive for all stakeholders as opposed to having it be a gotcha. But, um, we def, this is a hot topic inside the company.
As far as performance, though, please do know that like, we on the other end when we're watching and we're, we're looking at how these routes have been ran daily, weekly, you know, we're looking to see. We are identifying issues with specific drivers and patterns of behaviors. And that is actually what I do daily to make sure that we can change the negative and support the positive, right? So like, even if it's, um, I go into a route in the morning and I just say, well, how did they run today? And I see that this gentleman is, you know, he's made a turn that looks odd because it's not how he said it. Maybe he saw something that I didn't know, you know? So, now I realize that, yeah, you have, it's a very narrow street. He should be turning around there. I can actually adjust that in real time and move that line where I had him going or, or one of the, um, either the director of transportation or, you know, the bus company maybe have moved it. We can move it to, uh, better accommodate what the driver sees. You know, their feedback is fantastic, but also we can see their actual actions and make things match up to that so that we can make sure that they're, um, you know, they're being seen and heard as far as what they're doing. And, and if it looks right and it looks good, we're going to stick with it. And if not, we're going to relay that to the proper people to make sure they don't continue.
If I can chime in real quick, Amber, do you have your computer in front of you?
I do, yes.
All right, just look up for me the number of students we're currently servicing and providing transportation to. And then I'll get back with you on that one. But I wanted to speak, this was a massive, massive undertaking. Um, and I don't want this to turn into, uh, anything other than a positive for the community that we are now offering transportation. And I don't know any other district across the state that offers transportation with a, uh, point five mile radius. Um, um, so we're very fortunate in that regard, uh, that we can service the number of students and families we are currently servicing. Um, providing transportation. And, and I want to make it also clear that it's pre-K to five. It's not the entire, entire district. Um, and with that said, I know Ms. Bisti and I, and, and even here at several board meetings, we had numerous information sessions and, uh, displayed our, our maps and our boundaries and our radius to the community leading up to the vote that took place. Um, but I just wanted to emphasize that because it is important for folk to, to know that, um, this was a two-year process as well and conversations that took place. But this is a positive where we can service, um, as many students that we are servicing. And we are looking to, um, explore and expand, um, that radius to make it even shorter. Given the circumstances that were discussed with the comments today. Uh, Ms. Amber, do you have that information for us?
That is, we are proudly transporting one thousand eighty-two students daily.
All right, I'll say that one more time?
One thousand eighty-two students safely daily.
Okay, that's a, uh, thousand eighty-two students that approximately were walking, uh, six months ago. So we, we very proud of that. So I just wanted to kind of emphasize, emphasize that there are some other layers that we want to address. Uh, but we are also proud to, to announce that we are transporting over a thousand students daily.
In addition, I want to also proudly add to Mr. Mott's comment that we are one of the first, uh, districts in the area that we are offering apps to the parents. And Amber can attest to this as well.
Yes, you are the first in your area to be doing so with Bus Right. We love that. Very proud.
I had a question in regards to a follow-up, uh, public comment that was made earlier today. Uh, sorry, earlier in this meeting, uh, related to a two-hour route, uh, for a four-year-old. Since I'm now realizing that you're calibrating these routes, are you able to calibrate the distance and how long it's taking from the first pickup to arrival at school and vice versa?
Absolutely. Yeah, I mean, I cannot speak to, um, I cannot speak to the particulars of the comment today without having a, a ton of more information. Um, but yes, that is exactly what we are doing is we're looking to see ridership times. We're looking to make sure that, um, you know, if those can be shortened, certainly they will be. We're obviously working within, um, certain resources. So I do know, um, that while it's not perfect, we're going to continue to make sure that, um, we work on it daily and as resources open up, you know, we'll, we'll make sure that the ridership time is as small as possible.
Yeah, that was my follow-up question. If we could make sure particularly with age, a four-year-old should definitely not be in the bus for two hours. So if you are all calibrating that, there was a concern raised today and I hope that that will be addressed. Um, just specific, you could broadly just look at your ridership time and, and determine where those, where those sort of spots are.
Absolutely. I would say that, um, you know, some, with the resources that the district has, some of those longer special education routes, some of those out of district routes, um, potentially they are paired up due to the resources. But absolutely, we're going to be making sure that those are as small as possible for ridership times for all students if, if, um, we have the ability.
I didn't finish, but you can go ahead and.
I know it's on you say, it's just, that's what I was talking about on reporting. It's not just on time, but almost, you know, they, is there a whole reporting system we could look at? So that, I was also asking for that in my question. That's all.
Um, and, you know, I try to limit my sort of views on all of this. But I, each time I reflect on it, I just, it's difficult not to say. So the first thing I want to say is that I grew up in a community where, New York City, you don't have no busing. Only students with exceptionalities are bused. And that is even like, you gotta fight, fight hard to get transport, transportation. So Blizzard, Hurricane, whatever it is. You're walking, you're taking public transportation, good luck. Uh, so perspective from my sort of lens. When I arrived to Poughkeepsie, one of the first things that many community members were saying is, uh, Fatima, we need to get our kids bused. Okay, that was like over and over and over again repeatedly. And to our former superintendent's credit, um, he took that on. Um, and did the search and looked and sought, how can we make this work? Um, in fact, I think it was one of the greatest achievements that Dr. Oster gave to the Poughkeepsie City School District, is making that work. Because I've had the experience of being in a different school district where you do not get bused if you're two miles away from your home. No other district does that. So to get a point five, it, it's a pretty big deal. Um, the other thing I want to say that's sort of an inheritance, uh, of the city of Poughkeepsie's history is that additionally to all of this is the safe passage problem, right? Transparently, as a parent, I will tell you, I will not have my kids walk outside unless they really have to. Right? I, I, I feel that. I, I have those same concerns. Whether it's the cars, whether it's the, the navigation of all the things that we see in our streets. I am not foreign to that myself because I actually grew up in a high, but in fact, even more violent community. And when I just had to deal with it, right? So I trust and believe that I fully understand those concerns. Um, but I hope that this is also acknowledged. The effort that was put behind it, I think is real easy for, um, folks to come out here and crush us, oh, the board, this, the boy ain't doing this, school district don't care. Well, this is actually a pretty significant, um, win for our district. And I hope that people can step behind and really be grateful and thankful for it. Because a lot of, whole lot of kids that don't get this opportunity. Oh, wait, and one more thing I have to say about Bus Right. As a parent, what a game changer. Too bad I didn't have that because you gotta plan your life with your kids' pickup and drop off. And so that's a whole game changer for parents to enjoy.
I just want to clarify, as a
Thank you.
Of Poughkeepsie High School, Poughkeepsie Middle School and Warren Elementary School, I walk to school every day. I walked across two arterios in the rain, snow and sleet and never miss a day of school. So I want to start there, that I also walked to school every single day and didn't have the benefit of a bus. My concern is not about the number of students we're servicing. And my concern is not about, and it's not to discredit the work that has been put forward to make sure that our kids get to school safe. But someone just died cross, uh, on the arterial. Someone just died on the arterial. We have a parent telling us that they have to cross two arterios to get their kid to school and we're trying to figure out ways not to get them on a bus. I want to make sure that we're servicing the most vulnerable children. I.e. children who have to cross the arterial with someone who was just ran down by a car and killed. I want to make sure that those children are not being faced with the same things that they're being faced with on, down by Smith School. It's not about pointing blame. I, as a voter, I was, I do feel I was misled. A little bit, I do feel a little misled. Number one, and also I just checked the website. I don't see anywhere on the website a mile radius, a picture of the map or anywhere where parents can go and look, um, and find that mile radius. I Googled it. I tried to find it on the website, on the transportation site. If someone can point me to it, so I can point it to the parent so that they know that they're within, well, whatever radius that they're in. I just want transparency. I'm not, I don't really, it's not about being negative at all because I do see the positive in putting our children on buses. But when you have a parent who, and I'm from the north side of the city, and I've had to cross two arterios and it's been unsafe. And I've had to cross through neighborhoods that are unsafe and our kids are still walking through neighborhoods and arterios that are unsafe. I want to be able to service the most children is what I'm saying. So whatever we can do to appeal or to, 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 to service those kids who are crossing two arterios to get to school, that's what we should be doing. And that's, and that was my, that, that was my comment. I don't, it's not to, to, to put any negative on anything, but someone just died on Monday.
And, and because we're mentioning the death, um, and that's another thing I'm struggling with because we're going back and forth and, and, uh, and I'm a human. And so I, I just want to say that when I heard the news, I, I felt, I just felt crying. I just, and, and in fact, had intuition because I had been talking, literally been talking about it and talking about how the thirty mile per hour, um, just doesn't make sense because people are coming from behind to the, 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 the very, by North White Street. As soon as that light hits green, people are out. They don't, it is just, there's no consciousness that there's a school and that kids are crossing that corner. Um, in fact, I had raised and addressed the issue. I saw two, uh, young students. Um, I could tell they were fearful. They were trying to cross on the corner of May Street, not the intersection with the light and the cross, uh, our hero was standing to help our kids cross, uh, but on the main street corner. And so I pulled my car over, literally this happened maybe last week. Pulled my car over, put my hazards on to tell them, don't cross here. Go to the light where you see the crossing guard because it's too dangerous. I don't want you to cross here. What did the cars do behind me? They swerved speeding behind me, pissed off at me because I was doing that. It was very visible that I was talking to students. They were young too, ten years old. So, I say this to say that I think, I just want to acknowledge that we are on the journey to resolve this. And when you look at this from a systems perspective, you know, we have grown to be a culture of, I get it now. Get my Uber Eats, boom, got food, boom. Whatever I want, I do it on my phone. I get it immediately. When you're talking about a whole system that impacts the entire city, multiple people, multiple layers of complexities, not just the school district is involved. You took them out city, state, county. Too many people are involved in making decisions and changes to this. You gotta keep that in mind. So I'm going to acknowledge today that we're on that path. We're not getting it right. We're going to make mistakes. I also don't want to be responsible as a board member to say that we didn't care. Because we do. Please don't make those assumptions because it is an assumption. You don't, this is actually a service volunteer position. We don't get paid, okay? Um, and so I just want to acknowledge that we're on the path. We're doing everything, including our former superintendent taking this even on. As complex as it was, the school district took it on. And here we are, and we're going to get better and we're going to acknowledge. And this hero that lost his life because he was a person of service. He was a person of service. I saw him every morning. I saw him. I come down May Street because I dropped my kids off. How could you not notice what he does? So when I got told what happened, how could you not feel that so deeply? And also the responsibility of what you're going to do now. But I'm telling you now, the school district is going to do whatever we can in our power. But we can't do that work alone. In fact, there are a lot of things we cannot do on our own. There are other systems involved that have to partner with us to do the work.
Yeah, just to, just to piggyback quickly, that won't be long. Um, the arterial is a state highway, fifty-five. So we have to work in conjunction with the DOT, the city and the state to get everything that everybody's saying that they're shooting past. We have to work with all of them because the, the education department can't do it alone. So it's your voices that's going to help us because we're saying what we want. But it's your voices, the community that's going to help us to impact the state and impact the DOT to make them responsible. Because these are our children.
Thanks to everyone. This is, uh, possibly the most insightful, real working session I think I can remember in a long time. And it's because the community really cares. And we're, we're hoping we can go forward together and I compliment everybody who's working towards that goal.
So let, let me just say thank you again, Mr. Dunn, Amber, so much. I think I saw Marissa as well online, at least. Um, she joined the meeting, um, uh, the Bus Right app. We're very appreciative to it. Uh, I also know, I think we had a pilot school district, uh, i- i- in the state and others are, are really watching and listening and, and waiting for our responses to how well the app is working. Uh, so they can, uh, join the app family. Uh, also want to thank Ms. Dr. Bisti on your impromptu being called to the microphone. Ms. Roger, thank you for coming. Ms. Roger is our transportation supervisor. Um, Becky, I do believe we also have a Did You Know on our website. If there's any questions regarding transportation, how to get in contact with Ms. Roger and Ms. Akaya as well. Each of you, thank you very much. And also thank you board members for your spirited conversation this evening. Mr. Creed, Mr. Creedon, that concludes this particular workshop topic discussion. Uh, once again, Bus Right, thank you very much.
Proud to be here with you, Poughkeepsie. Thank you very much.
Unity, we very much appreciate you and we're here for you. Thank you. My respects to all the people affected we talked about this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Before I move on?
Not at all.
All right, thank you. Um, we have a, uh, if you notice, we have a new member up here on the.
and um, I'm gonna let him introduce himself, put you in the line. And you can introduce yourself, um, Jonathan. And um, just tell him, maybe share with your fellow board members. Why'd you, why'd you sign up? And just give a little background. Thank you. Sorry, and I'm, I'm, and I'm, what? Okay, um, and he wasn't set up for this, so I called him out cold. So I apologize. Just what you wanted for the first nine.
Um, hello, my name is Jonathan Gisom Pacheco. I am part of the Poughkeepsie High School um School District. I am a senior and um I'm right now here, of course, as a student liaison. And am trying to actually necessarily get in communication with students. And actually, um, as I try to voice concerns and especially with how um like things may be taken from the student perspective. Um, as you can see, I was taking notes and I was trying necessarily see and understand where exactly does the board align? Especially with um where they actually take actions with um, um, where it comes to like student, not only their safety, but also where like they actually value like necessary education. Um, I am a part of the, where I am right now, my goals is necessarily, of course, is to actually get this uh, like where to actually build, necessarily bridge that gap where there is not enough proper communication. I feel as if, because at times, as not only a student, because of the fact that I recently came to this district. Um, I see as if there definitely is like this little like gap between necessarily not only the students, but also like the board education, especially with thoughts on how like we should come across to actions taken. And not only in favor of like um the, our students, but also in favor of their safety and as well as other per precautions. Um, being the fact that like I'm participating in many clubs. I'm part of not only the A F J R C, the, the National Honor Society, and as well as um part of like other club, like honorable clubs like M B K. Um, we, I work with like a lot of like necessarily community, especially with um the kids at Krieger. As like M B K runs a mentorship program with them, with N H S participating in a community, community service. With the A F J R C, um, recently actually enlisted in the, in the Army National Guard. Um, it's just overall, I'm trying to necessarily see where this perspective is. Where we as like necessarily students and how we can actually not only voice our concerns, but also where we could actually bring forward any ideas we actually possibly want to have in our community. And that's necessarily where like I'm, I'm here. And um, even though um I'm still new to the process, I'm still trying to necessarily understand where I can go and actually what my limitations are, not only as a student liaison, but also as necessarily a part of like this board. Um, so that's really where like I am trying necessarily accomplish. And as well as like who I am and like what I'm trying to be in, in part of the process.
Thank you very much. Um, next is we have a report out on all.
Wait, wait, wait. Jonathan has to tell us a report out on our students. I'm just saying, I don't know if you have anything to share.
I mean.
Feedback.
Pertaining to the students, as of right now, I'm trying to necessarily get in contact with not only our Pioneer Posts, which is necessarily our journalism club. Um, as in pertaining to like, how can we actually necessarily get more interviews out to the student public? Cause I feel as if while we are giving recognition to a lot of what is happening in our initially Poughkeepsie High School and other places. I feel as if, if we're able to necessarily extend to where we actually get a lot of our interviews and necessarily perspectives on like cer- certain changes and like towards like a lot of the safeties happening in, in the Pioneer and, and like necessarily overall in our Poughkeepsie, Poughkeepsie High School, like Poughkeepsie District. Um, that's where I'm necessarily trying to push right now. Um, as of right now, of course, since it's the beginning of the school year, I'm still trying to necessarily understand what can I do? And where can I, like, where can I necessarily extend to actually get this communication gap filled? So that's what, that update with, especially with the students as on my part.
Wonderful. And any updates we can get in terms of the student perspective on safety concerns? You know, I'm sure that there was a visceral reaction to what just happened. And just curious at our next board meeting, if you could share some reflections from our students and what they're thinking about and in terms of the transportation. Um, I, I really would like, I'm curious about middle school since we're launching, you know, a review also for busing and wondering whether or not that's something that students are feeling excited about or concerned or they're not really, would be interested in it or not. Um, so I look forward to your report for our next meeting.
All right. And, any other comments from the board? All right, the next part of the agenda is the committee reports. I think we're gonna be a little light on, on it when I looked at the schedule. So we'll just go through them. And if there were any meetings, please correct me. And then as we made a, we've made a list to try and get, because we're so new where they're all assigned. So I'm just gonna go through them and see where they stand and if there was any meetings help.
Right, well, I, I, my recollection was, Board President, is that we went through the committees and left off that folks would think about their assigned committees and then come back for this meeting to say, yay, I accept. Um, and also for me, I think, I, I would imagine that we should have some kind of formal structure of how we're engaging. I'm sure there's will be some questions about co-chairs and uh how to take the next steps.
This is um, there is a list now, a master list. Becky, you made up a, a, a master list, so we got that. Um, did it go to everybody? Yeah, all right, so, and and it's on the agenda under the assignment, so I'm assuming.
I, I'm just clarifying the follow-up from our last meeting. Call us confirming the, the assignments.
The follow-up was, we drew up the list. It was placed on the agenda and I read it, so I assumed everybody else, which I shouldn't have done. All right, is there? And um, and if anybody hasn't read it, did you? All right, so there are the new members and Eleanor, did you, who is it?
Um, for the um
Committees.
The committee, yeah.
All right, so we seem to go into the com- committee reports. And you'll find out that some of the
So I just want to clarify then, in the assumption, because I think I'm interpreting this that the assumption is that all board members are okay with their assigned committees.
And I was holding that
That's what I wanted to clarify.
To it comes to a vote because it's on the
But if we're doing report outs, then I am confused.
Okay. We didn't have a lot of meetings. Like, if we go through, there wasn't a lot of meetings between the boards. And we're pointing that and that'll step up as we get appointments and, and move forward.
So can I have requests that we clarify then um who those assigned committees are first? That way, as we go along, we know who's responsible for reporting what. I need that for clarity.
All right, when we, um, is the resolution printed in the?
There are resolutions in the agenda, but right now we actually are in the reporting phase, which I think we should just move on with the reporting part of it.
That's what
I understand that um
So should we make a motion?
People have not been appointed yet because that is at the end of the agenda. But at least we had a few committees that have already met, since this is the Board of Education Report section. Can we just move forward?
Yes.
Yes, I can make a motion to table the reports until the next meeting.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. That brings us to the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that need to be pulled?
I did have a, a question and a clarification on consent agenda item twelve point one. The placement of students with exceptionalities. I would like to pull twelve point one placement of students with exceptionalities for discussion.
Becky, do I, do I make the movement away from to hear all of them? Are there, all right, so we're twelve point one.
Seven point five.
So that item may be set aside for separate consideration and the board can vote on the balance of the consent agenda as presented, Mr. Creeden.
Okay, we're just waiting to see if there's, so far we have three of them, correct, Becky? Twelve point one and I love any other, any others at this time? All right, can I have a, a motion to proceed with the consent? Uh, do I do the motion to remove or just? All right, could I have a motion to remove eleven point five and twelve point one from the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We will now move to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to move forward with the consent agenda?
Or moved.
All in favor?
I, I'll second it.
All right, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, now can we return to, for discussion on Amendment eleven five, the administrative uh appointments?
Sure, um, I'm pulling for discussion. Um, uh, we met with Mr. Syracuse um this evening. Had a great conversation with Mr. Syracuse. I'm excited for the work that uh is possibly going to happen or that will happen in the district under the new H R. Um, Assistant Direct, Assistant Superintendent of H R. Um, I'm hoping that, my hoping for this district is to clean it up. Um, there needs to be a culture shift here in the district, not just here at Central Office, but throughout the entire district. And I'm hoping that this position um or this appointment will start the process of cleaning it up. Uh, I, I always like to quote my grandmother and she says, the fish rots from the head to the tip. Unfortunately, this building is the head. So cleaning up is gonna have to start here, um, starting here and it's gonna work its way through this district. Um, so I'm hoping that this new Assistant Superintendent, uh, Mr. Syracuse, if you're appointed tonight, which I think he will be. Um, I know you will be. I hope that, uh, yeah, the process of cleaning this district will start. Um, and let's start with personnel, uh, and work our way down. Uh, it's time for some new energy here in this district. It's time for some new energy here in the city of Poughkeepsie. Um, and it's time to get a better smelling fish and that's where I'll leave it. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments?
I'm excited that Mrs. Syracuse is coming on board. I'm excited and will obviously put you to work. I'm excited.
And I'm, I'm excited too, but I'm gonna make a joke. Just warn you, we do have to resurrect the tennis team. And there may be an opening because we have brand new courts and we have the, we, we're, we have a modified women. But, but from what I've read on your resume, you know, it's just duck whenever you see the um athletic director. All right, so could I, I have a, have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Glad to be working on it.
Thank you.
The next resolution we'll address is the, do I vote to bring it on to the agenda? Twelve point one, the placement of students with exceptionality, resolution twenty-six point one, twenty-seven. Do I have a motion to bring it on to the agenda?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, we don't, do we have to say aye or just bring it on? Discussion?
Yes, um, in reviewing the um, the document of placement of students with like exceptionalities. I just had a question on um related services. There are many related services that students are entitled to on their I E Ps. I just noticed that there were no mentions of skilled uh nursing services or health office services on these I E Ps. Um, I know there are students that have specific health conditions which require them to interact with a health office and with a nursing team. Um, just wanted some information and clarification around why there are no students listed with the skilled nursing services on their I E Ps.
So I can address the legalities of that just to get us started and then miss, maybe Mr. Ma can address the practical piece. If that will be helpful, board member. Um, so skilled nursing service uh is, as you're, as you've noted, uh, a related service under New York State law, recognized under our commissioners regulations. A student who requires uh a one-to-one nurse in order to attend to uh, you know, any medical need that they may have that requires the assessment and medical judgment of a medical professional is entitled by law to a skilled nurse. Um, New York State and Medicaid regulations have a rubric that has to be followed in order for a student to uh have that service added to their I E P. Principally, there needs to be a prescription by a physician indicating that a skilled nursing service is required. It's a highly restrictive one-on-one service, so it's not certainly appropriate for every student. Um, so there has to be a prescription by a physician. Uh, there has to be a skilled nursing plan of care. That then needs to be vetted through our Committee on Special Education Process, which is the committee structure that evaluates related services in special education. And if the C S E, the Committee on Special Education decides the student needs that skilled nursing to be able to attend school and participate, that indeed is a service that the district is obligated to provide. Uh, and that is something that would go on an I E P. Um, there are, a- as I said, uh, regulations and guidance from the Medicaid Office and from the, the New York State School Health Office regarding when that service should be warranted. It really is only warranted in extenuating circumstances where a student has a urgent medical need that they cannot self uh attend to and that they cannot be addressed through a building-wide nurse. Um, so there certainly are students that receive skilled nursing services. Not every student with a medical need, you know, obviously needs that service. Um, typically, however, students who have other medical needs that would require them to go to the nursing office. Uh, so for instance, for administration of medication, uh, for having uh their blood glucose checked. You know, there may be various things that they require uh nursing intervention for. That would typically go in the special alerts section of the I E P. And that is not something that typically would be presented to the board because it qualifies as personally identifiable information. Um, that is only really, uh, the C S E is the only body that is entitled to see that information and the nurse themselves because it's very sensitive. Um, I want to clarify the board's role in approval of I E Ps. So under our state regulations, it is the C S E that recommends services and supports. But because the board holds the power of the purse, so to speak, and controls the budget, the board is required to appropriate funds to support and approve any I E Ps that are recommended by the C S E. So the information that is provided to the board is not going to be inclusive of all the information that is necessarily on that student's I E P. It would only be the program and related services um that require a financial appropriation from the district to support. So it, all to say, there are very might way, there, there very might well be some students in that group of students that you're voting on tonight who have medical needs and who have a special alert on their I E P that addresses those medical needs. But that isn't something that would necessarily go to the board. It's not something that requires a board authorization. Um, if there were a need for a full-blown, you know, F T E in terms of a skilled nurse, that is something that would typically uh go in that recommendation, but not every student needs that level of support. But where it is necessary, you're absolutely right, the C S E would recommend But where it is necessary, you're absolutely right, the CSE would recommend that, and that would be a district obligation. And I can say, just anecdotally, being the district's council, we have reviewed several skilled nursing contracts for the district that this board has approved over the course of the last two to three years. So I am aware that there are several, you know, students in your district who currently receive a skilled nurse one-to-one with that level of support. So I don't know if Mr. Maok has anything further to address, just from a practical and implementation standpoint, but I just wanted to address the legalities of the board's role in approving special education placements.
You mentioned confidentiality, could you go back, because I had never seen them, and I assumed that, as you said, they were, it could be identifiable?
Sure, so basically-
Wouldn't say it under HIPAA or whatever.
Yeah, yeah, so just to clarify, HIPAA is not applicable to school districts. HIPAA applies to covered health agencies, not to school districts. However, we have robust confidentiality laws that apply to public school districts as well, under both state and federal law. Those laws are our federal FERPA, which is the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, that's the federal confidentiality law. And then under state law, we have Education Law 2D, which is the state's companion law that also ensures the same rights. And basically, what is relevant under those laws for everybody to consider is that those laws provide that unless an individual in the district needs particular information to do their job in the district, they are not entitled to see any information about a student. And that is why typically, the balance that is struck, because of course, as I said, the board has to approve the fiscal allocation for an IEP. However, the board is not entitled to any personally identifiable information about the student. So typically, what is presented to the board for approval would be things like the services and the actual placement, for instance, if there's an out-of-district placement or a one-to-one aide or something like that, that level of detail would be provided to ensure that the board has the detail to approve the financial allocation. However, because the board is not involved in actually programming for students with special needs and developing IEPs, things like their particular medical needs, the details of their evaluations, their trauma histories, their past, you know, their family histories, that's a level of personally identifiable information that is legally impermissible to share with the board. We're not, the district cannot share that at a board level because it is not necessary for the board to do its job. So that's the standard. Does the board need access to this information in order to fulfill the board's purpose of approving the fiscal allocation necessary to support the IEP? Does that address your question, Mr. Creeden?
Yes, thank you for the clarification, I couldn't have said it better, so.
Ms. Naomi, any additional questions regarding the topic?
I did have a question on, I know there is an ability, there is an ability to maintain the student's privacy by listing the related service simply as skilled nursing service or school health services?
Yep, and it would be, so for a student, for instance, for a student for whom skilled nursing is recommended, that would be something that is indicated that would go to the board for approval.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to clarify too, there are moments where a student might, say they take a medication, they're going to have a, and they do have an IEP, and they do have a touch point daily in the health office. There is an opportunity for Medicaid to reimburse for the, for those services, from my understanding. So my question is around just making sure we're covering students where there could be financial, yeah, a financial-
Oh, no, it's a really great point, so, and I think we, maybe at the next meeting, we can have Dr. Palmer give an update on the number of contracts we have. But I can speak anecdotally, like I said, as the district's council, I have reviewed a number of contracts with outside nursing agencies to provide skilled nurses to our students in Poughkeepsie who require that level of support. So I know it is something we're doing, the number of students who get that support, you know, their specific profiles, I'm not familiar at that level, but I can certainly assure you that I have reviewed those contracts, so I know that we have skilled nursing in place for those students who need it, and your point is a very good one, that you're quite correct. Under our Medicaid guidelines, if a physician orders a nurse and the CSE places it on an IEP, that is a Medicaid reimbursable service as long as the parent consents to us billing Medicaid for that service. So, but still, even though there's Medicaid reimbursement, it's an expense on the district in the first instance, which is why the board would have to vote on that in the appropriate circumstance.
Okay. In some situations, as an outside skilled one-to-one nurse provides those services, but in other situations, the nurse that is in the building is providing those services, so that was my question around that specific-
Yes, so if it's the nurse within the building that's providing the support, again, typically, that wouldn't be a set aside related service under state ed guidance. It would be noted either in the special alerts section of the IEP or in the present levels of performance in the IEP, and that's not something that goes to the board. So typically, if a student only requires that intervention from a building-level nurse that's supporting the whole building, that support would be noted on their IEP, so it is a contract, you know, with the parent, so to speak, that's enforceable. But it's not something that the board would be privy to because it is protected health information.
Are we comfortable with, we had enough for the public meeting and you can follow up?
Yes, thank you.
Alright.
I would like to say, I think Dr. Palmer, with the sped, the growing sped population in the district, and now we're hiring a Superintendent of HR, I'm hoping we can fill that role sooner than later, so that she has support in her office.
Thank you. Now we have to go back to the vote. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
To place it on the agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, we have the motion on the vote, correct? Can I have a motion to approve 12.1 placements of students with exceptionality?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, that brings us to action items of the board.
Nope, can we, Agenda 13?
Oh, we pull up, I thought I got them all.
Becky, 11, memoriam?
Alright, oh, sorry. He did.
Alright. Alright, so going back, we'll start with, what on, the approval of the to amend the Student Achievement Committee, 18.1, do I have? Go back, make sure I get it right, second. Is it, is there a motion to approve 18.1?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on to 18.2. Let me go back here. The appointments for the Save Committee, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Motion, can I have a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, 18. The motion carries, thank you, Becky. Is there a motion to approve item 18.3? The modification of the Professional Medical Services Agreement between the Poughkeepsie City School District and New Vantel?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. 18.4, resolution, the Finance Committee into separating two individuals committees. Do I have a, a motion to approve item 18.4?
Removed.
Second.
On, can I have a vote? Any discussion, sorry, any discussion? Do I have a, do I have a motion for a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Is there 18, dot, five, the approval to bring the first reading of Policy 2150? Do I have a motion to, for the first reading, is there a motion for approval? Do I approve it on the first reading? Alright, do I have a motion to approve the first reading?
So moved.
All in, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, sorry, discussion, yes, discussion.
So I read through the, of three of the policies for filling the board vacancies. Are these new policies for filling the board vacancies? Or are these already established policies that we're bringing back? Are these policies based on the new arrangement and the new vacancy, then we're starting a new process of filling vacancies?
Um, Kate, are you still there?
I am, Bob.
You want to handle that one?
Well, I, so I actually did not, I was not asked to review this particular policy. So I'm not sure, maybe, I'm not sure Becky took the lead on, you know, recommended updates from NISBA or something like that.
NISBA had recommended these policies, these are brand-new policies, they've been in our queue for review for a very long time. NISBA is, they have their attorneys that review them before they send it out to us.
Mr. Cummings, I can clarify, just also, because you're new to the board, so as a public school district, we're a member of the New York State School Boards Association. And one of the services that the board historically, not historic, I'd say recently, actually, over the last two, three years, has paid for is the New York State School Boards Association Policy Review Service. That is something we basically pay a flat fee to that association. And they send us policy updates as necessary, they review our policy manual on an ongoing basis. And they send us updates as the law changes, or as they notice that our policies are out of date with current law, they will suggest recommended revisions. So those typically get filtered through Becky, the district clerk, because she's the one who has, is the point of contact with NISBA. And if they recommend a revision, that will be incorporated then into the board agenda. So I don't know, Becky, I hate to put you on the spot, but do you happen to know specifically what revisions that NISBA was recommending?
I actually would like to, yeah, I would, since I'm the co-chair on the Policy Committee. It is, so in fact, the board has a policy committee where policies are reviewed, and we did just recently meet. Would have been a part of my report out, because part of what I wanted to do was to describe what it is that we do at the Policy Committee. And a lot of it is exactly that, is that there are annual policies that are required to be reviewed by all districts, and NISBA takes the lead in filtering what those policies are. There are things that are required, that we don't necessarily have the flexibility to decide how we want to launch it, it's law. There are some things that they may say that are social services law-related, for example. And, you know, we would, if, obviously, we don't have the bandwidth, we don't have the legal knowledge to make determinations on how we launch a policy, so we would bring in our legal counsel to help cultivate what that policy would look like, for example. There are a multitude of ways that this gets launched and put onto the agenda. I will transparently say I was not prepared, I would have given you a background on these policies that are on the agenda, I'm sure that these were policies that are required to be approved, which is why they're on the agenda. But my-
Well, I think that's, I think that's the concern.
But I will just say, again, since I'm the board representative on the Policy Committee, my goal is, in being in that committee, is to go through each policy so that board members really understand what those policies are and also what the genesis of those policies were.
Yeah, I read all three of them, I understand them, but Kate, have you read, you haven't read through?
No, I was not consulted regarding the policy, so-
As an attorney, you haven't looked through these policies before they've been put on the-
No, I was, I was not asked to review it, but what I would say is that, I just pulled it up on Board Docs quick as we were talking here, there is certainly no urgency to adopting this policy tonight, so, Mr. Cummings-
Your reading, Kate.
Yeah, so you will hear me, you will hear me say numerous times when we're reviewing policy, we need to adopt this one stat, because it's a state mandate that just went into effect, we have to adopt it, X, Y, and Z. That is not the case with this particular policy, which is why it is on a typical policy review schedule, which requires two reads under our board policy. The two-read process is probably similar to what you have in the city, Mr. Cummings, is that the board reviews the policy first, and then it gets sent back to Policy Committee for a second read, and then returns to the board for a second read, where it would be adopted. So I certainly would like to put eyes on this, given that it looks like there is some discretionary language in the policy and what's being recommended. So I think all that would happen tonight is if the board approves a first read, it would then get sent back to Policy Committee, I can certainly weigh in and give you guys my feedback as well, if that's something that you guys would like to get from it.
Well, that's what I want to clarify, because we have quite a significant number of policies that are being overhauled, and I just want to be clear for clarity purposes in our process, are we saying that our legal counsel is supposed to review every policy that we have? And if so, then what was the purpose in the district, investing in NISBA overhauling our policies?
Well, as current board president-
I'm asking our legal counsel, because I want to just make sure that-
That the legal counsel can answer-
Yeah, but that was the question was specific to-
But the decision to pay and use NISBA policies, I, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I view that as a board decision, alright? And if we bought it from, somebody else from New York State School Board, we bought another one, then we would have that, and then we-
Well, clearly, we made a resolution to do that, otherwise we wouldn't be overhauling it.
So, Bob, Bob, if I could interject to you just quickly, so typically, I'll tell you, many of my school districts around the state use a policy review service, they either use NISBA or they use Erie One Voces, those are the two competing policy services that are available, and what I would say is that, notwithstanding the purchase of the policy review service, it is customary that many of my districts would say, particularly if the policy service has a notation that says, "Check with your legal counsel," or "This is discretionary," etc.
I was just about to-
I'm sorry to cut you off, Mr. Creeden, I'm sure you're going there.
We bought it, if we see one that we feel is checked and like that, we introduce-
I'm not asking a process question for my own edification. I'm asking it because the question was placed on the floor about our legal counsel reviewing our policies. Therefore, I just want to be clear about that. Is it that our legal counsel should be reviewing every policy? Or because NISBA, who we've paid for and is approved to review our policies and give them to us? Just want to clarify that.
My recommendation would be that the NISBA folks, they're wonderful, I, you know, I work with that policy service every day. However, there's lots of areas where they are going to flag and say, "Check with your legal counsel," or "This is up to local discretion," those types of notations. If there are those notations in the policy, then those are probably the ones that you guys should prioritize having legal review of. And where it is a template where they say, "This just parrots the law, this is what the law requires, there's no discretion." There's probably not really an urgent need to have legal involved in those, but if there's ones where it says, you know, "Consult with your school attorney," or "This is a matter of local discretion or local decision-making," then those were the ones that we would typically prioritize for legal review.
Thank you.
Thank you, alright. Since this is only the first reading, can we move it forward, or do we want further discussion on that?
So the options would be that the board could approve the first read at this point and send it back to Policy Committee. And also with a notation on the record tonight that you would like legal to weigh in on the policy, before it comes back for a second read to the board. Or the board could simply not move forward with the first read, it's absolutely your decision.
Becky, can we, what do I have to do to do the first approval with the provisions that it's going to come back to us with further review? Or just, just approve the first reading?
I think we can take, Mr. Creeden, I think we can take a vote on first read. And I think it's understood by everyone on the call that, that there's, it sounds like there's at least a couple board members who would have a desire to have legal weigh in on the policy before it comes back for a second review. And I think we can all agree to that.
And I don't, I expect you to weigh in on every policy, just so you know, but I did read through these ones, and I saw that they were discretionary, so that's why I was asking if you-
Yep, no, so I'm, I'm happy to do that, happy to do that. So I think we're, uh, I, what I don't recall is Becky, was there a motion that was seconded, or do we need to actually have a motion on?
We have to do them up.
We, we did have a motion that, um, Fatima moved it, Eleanor.
Okay, great, so it sounds like there's been discussion and we're ready for roll call on a first read.
Can we have a vote on eighteen point five, a first read?
So moved.
All in favor? Can we have a motion to approve for eighteen point four for the first read? Uh, eighteen? Wait, we did eighteen? Okay, okay, do we, okay, eighteen point six, thank you.
Still move.
Sorry.
Second.
All in favor?
No, wait, Bob, we need discussion first before we move for vote.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, uh, motion to approve? All in favor? So move, motion carries, and the-
Eighteen point seven.
Eighteen point seven. Is there a motion? A second?
Second.
All in favor? Any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
So move.
Motion carried.
Motion carried. It's, I'm saying so moved, motion carried, alright. So we're up to, uh, eighteen point eight, the approval for three board members to attend uh, NISBA Annual Convention and Expo on October tw- twenty fifth.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? A motion for any discussion? Motion to?
Now, all in favor?
All in favor? Motion carries, alright. Well, you guys are, thank you, Becky. Alright, and does? The other, um, items are the informative, right, so we don't have to vote, correct?
Correct.
So, um, are there superintendent's comments? That, that's right, and the board count.
Thank you, Mister Creedon, if we all can reference back to eleven point seven, eleven point eight, eleven point nine. Want to recognize a memoriam of three individuals who were former employees of the district, one of which was a city employee. Jacqueline Richardson, eleven point seven. Served in the Poughkeepsie City School District as a health aide prior to her death, and on September twelfth, two thousand twenty-five. Poughkeepsie City School District Board of Education Administration and staff extend our sincere condolences to Miss Richardson's family and friends and join them in honoring her memory. Eleven point eight. Thomas Hollerin. Mister Hollerin served in the Poughkeepsie City School District as a science teacher prior to his death on September eighth, two thousand twenty-five. Poughkeepsie City School District Board of Education Administration and staff extend their sincere condolences to Mister Hollerin's family and friends and join them in honoring his memory. Eleven point nine, James Montenio. Mister Montenio served the Poughkeepsie City School District as a crossing guard prior to his death on September twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-five. Poughkeepsie City School District Board of Education Administration and staff extend their sincere condolences to Mister Montenio's family and friends and join them in honoring his memory. Thank you. My comments, as we conclude this meeting, I want to offer sincere thank you and gratitude, um, to a group of employees. Um, I don't wanna call out individual names, what I will do is to mention the entire faculty and staff of Smith Elementary School. Those of you who know who you are, who lend it helping hand and support, um, during our tragic incident that took place outside of the school on, on Monday, this past Monday. Um, faculty and staff that really took time out of their day to leave the building and go out to aid and assist, we, we just can't thank you enough for that. And we wanna continue to offer them any support and assistance they would need as they too experienced such a traumatic experience as, that took place on Monday. So I just wanted to share with the entire community, my, my thanks to the entire, uh, faculty and staff of, of Smith Elementary School, and to the family. I believe, Mister Creedon, you share with me the viewing and services, location, time, date. If you can prepare, Mister Creedon, in your remarks, to share that with the entire community, I would be grateful to you for that. And at this point in time, that concludes my comments, uh, Mister Creedon, thank you very much.
Um, I just do wanna, um, continue to acknowledge, um, James Montenino, um, and the service that he provided to our students, um. It's not easy to be a crossing guard, um, you're out there in the elements. Um, you're having to navigate, um, the public and all the glory that that comes with. And, um, he did it, um, and ended up losing his life uh, while in service. Um, and I have, um, I hold high regard those individuals that, um, serve their community, uh, in the most humble ways possible. He wasn't out there trying to shine, or, um, you know, get any credit for it. He just was a, in his humanity, serving his community. Um, and I thank him for his service, uh, my condolences to his family. I'm sure this is so deeply, deeply painful. Um, I wanna thank the nurse that went out, um, to do CPR. Um, that is just, um, not only do you, uh, react on the moment of service, um, when you are, um, have that ability and training to respond to an emergency, um, but it's also extremely traumatizing, um, when you have a life skill, when you are performing basic life support, and then the person that you had your hands on, uh, does not survive. Uh, keep in mind that that, that does something to you, um, and will stay with you for your entire life. Um, and I'm sure that the children that were witness, uh, the public, those that were around, um, how profoundly, um, that event will be. Um, so I just wanna take a moment to acknowledge that. I'd like to just share, um, a reflection on Hispanic Heritage Month. Uh, Hispanic Heritage Month is observed from September fifteen to October fifteen. I want to acknowledge the histories, cultures, and contribution of those roots that are from Mexico, the Caribbean, Central America, South America. The story of Latinos in the United States is complex, it's rich, it's painful. Long before the United States existed, indigenous peoples, Africans, and later colonized populations forged the foundations of what we now call Latino identity. That identity carries with it the weight of colonization, forced migration, and systemic exclusion, but also resilience, creativity, and cultural pride. Latinos today make up nearly one in five people in the United States, and within that number is immense diversity of race, culture, and national origin. It's important to remember that Latino is not a race, but an ethnicity that encompasses many identities. This diversity calls us to move past generalizations and instead honor the distinct voices, traditions, and experiences that exist within our communities. Contributions of Latinos to this country spans centuries and are deeply intertwined with both hardship and achievement. From the earliest settlements in what is now American Southwest to the construction of vital industries like agriculture, rail, railroads, and service sectors, Latinos have been instrumental to the economic foundation of the United States. The same time, their stories include the struggle against colonization, labor exploitation, segregation, and policies that often sought to erase cultural identity. Despite these obstacles, Latinos have continually advanced civil rights, enriched the arts and sciences, and served with distinction in the military and public institutions. As we recognize Hispanic Heritage Month, we are reminded that the history of Latinos in the United States is not only about survival, but about shaping and enriching the nation's cultural, economic, and civic life. Honoring this legacy calls us to ensure that our schools and communities remain places where diversity is valued, where histories are taught with honesty, and where all students have the opportunity to see their identities reflected and their potential supported. Uh, just some quick facts, more than sixty-eight millions Latinos that reside in the United States, making it approximately twenty percent of its total population. Many are multilingual, with over two-thirds speak a language other than English at home. And just fun fact, like, not all Latinos just speak Spanish, there are dialects from your native, huh, communities. Seventy-four point one percent of Latinos aged twenty-five and over hold at least a high school diploma, which that was a shocking, um, uh, detail. Where twenty-one point five percent hold a bachelor's degree or higher, twenty-one point five percent of Latinos. Hispanics and Latinos have the highest uninsured rate among US racial, ethnic groups and face barriers to preventive care, even as life expectancy for Hispanics remain higher than for many other groups. Thank you.
Thank you, Fatima, alright. Naomi?
I just wanted to echo everyone's concerns with, um, the safety of our students. Um, I am a parent of a student that travels, that walks to and from Smith School every day. Um, I did wanna speak to the tragedy of the crossing guard who lost their life outside of Smith School. This was not just a terrible accident, it was the predictable result of how our city streets have been designed. Streets that pri- prioritize speed and cars over the safety of children, staff, and community members. As a nurse and as a designer, I know health is more about the absence of illness. It is shaped by our environment, by whether we can walk safely, breathe clean air, and feel secure in our neighborhoods. This loss is not separate from health, it is a public health failure. If we look at Raymond Avenue, along Basser College, we see flashing lights, caution signs, visible striping, reduced speeds, all to protect adult learners at an elite institution. That design says to every driver, caution, precious cargo crossing. Meanwhile, our youngest learners dash across the arterial with traffic flying by at highway speeds. And to them, the message is clear, these drivers have somewhere to go, and it is more important than you. The inequity is blatant, and our children understand that. The road itself tells them that some lives are more valued than others. This inequity is not imagined. As Addie Tomer and Caroline George wrote in their twenty-twenty-two Brookings article, "To build safe streets, we need to address racism in urban design." In quote, "Across the nation, street safety is dictated by race, class, and place." They remind us that the lower a metro area's median household income, the more dangerous its streets are for people walking. And they trace this reality back to historical choices. By dividing communities with roads, refusing to invest in infrastructure, and restricting economic growth, such decisions have fueled the specialized patterns of the safety that we see today. But we are not powerless. Evidence shows that lowering speeds in school zones, adding better lighting and crosswalks, building refuge islands, and using pedestrian-activated signals do save lives. These are not extras, they are essentials. I urge the city, the state, and our district to act on two tracks. Immediate protections near Smith School, some that we talked about this evening, so that no more lives are at risk while we wait. Second, long-term redesign of the arterial, so that it truly respects pedestrians and connects rather than divides our community. Poughkeepsie is not a pass-through place, it is our home. We owe it to our children, our staff, and to the memory of the crossing guard that we lost to demand better and to do better right now. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Jamar?
Thank you, uh, I'll echo everything that Naomi just said, um. I wanna send my condolences to the Montenino family, um. It's been a rough week here in the district, throughout the city, um, and I'm really proud at the response from the city, proud of the response from the district. I'm disappointed in the fact that a lot of times the responses are reactive and not proactive, so, um, hopefully, we can. Actually, I'm gonna charge the community to reach out to their local senator, Mister Rob Rollison. Reach out to your assemblyman, Mister Jonathan Jacobson, because it will take an act of legislation in New York State for us to get speed cameras on these roads. It takes an act of legislation for us to do anything on these state roads. We need to be advocating our local elected officials up in Alba, who are up in Albany, who we pay to be in Albany, to make these decisions or to push these legislations, um, that are going to affect our children. I I grew up, I, I was born and raised here in Poughkeepsie, I have my own entire life, I lived on Maple Street, on the arterial, um, the westbound arterial. So I know the dangers of living on an arterial, I know, um, the dangers of walking to school on, in, in this city, and I'm hoping that we can do something better next year, or do something better this year while we can, um. I won't harp on that anymore, I, I will say, um, in reference to board, again, Mister Creedon, I, I'm gonna say this probably every, every week until we get it fixed, or until we figure out something, uh, about the rules and how we conduct ourselves on this dais. Um, order to me is more important, uh, than a lot, mainly because the public is listening. Um, and this can get confusing, um, what's happening up here can get confusing. So order is very important in, in these meetings, and I think we should take that into consideration, that, uh, people are already confused about what's going on, um, and to have a disorderly meeting will just lead to more confusion, um, and misinformation. Um, again, I'll keep my comments to three minutes, because that's all we give the public, um, so they're- Again, I'll keep my comments to three minutes because that's all we give the public. Um, so there. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Eleanor?
I just want to say, just to reiterate with all, all the other board members, condolences to the Monta, um, you know, family and it's such a tragedy, um, my condolences. But again, all agencies, we have to all work together. It's not just a Poughkeepsie City School District thing. It's a whole community thing. And when we get fed up enough, we will, and unite together, we can go to we are the people who are responsible for these things and keeping us safe, which is Albany. We vote, we pay our taxes, we need to hold them accountable. Bus ride, I think that's amazing because we were, and we still are a walking district, but um, it's about time for us to move with the changes and start getting our children busing. And I'm very happy and pleased with the bus ride. Uh, lastly, just this, um, the, we're only as good as our foundation. So we can sit here at the board, but there's a lot of things that need to transpire from the foundation of the school district. Um, and we have to put help where it's needed. In particular, our special ed department as well, because we have a lot of children with special needs. And um, I do concur that Ms. Palmer needs help. So, you know, we, we need to do that. That's important because all, my child has an IEP. So those children, they need help. Okay? Um, so we just need support from the foundation up. We need support all around. I'm sorry, just one more thing. Um, the city is doing very good things in the district. And I think that, you know, Mr. Mob, if we can do something to boost morale by giving our teachers and our staff um, recognition, starting from the elementary to the middle school to the high school, when they're doing something good, let's recognize them for doing something good. Because we can always gripe and complain, but what about the people in the district that are doing good things? The teachers? You know, I, I, I went past Artira. I saw Ms. Jessica out there. I, I didn't want to stop because of the cars. But I saw her out there and I'm not, but the people are doing so much good things. Ms. Palmer is too. And I, people need to be recognized. That's how you boost the morale.
No, I, I concur. Let me just interject if you don't mind. Yes, I do need to mention Mr. Dylan Tully. I, I said I wasn't going to mention names, but he however, went out of his way, out of the building. He's a fourth grade teacher, I do believe, over at Smith, um, outside to pro- to provide CPR. So in terms of highlighting recognition, um, that is one I think needs to be stated openly, publicly to, to him. And I hope he gets this message um, in recognition of, of his service.
Um, I'm going to ask Jonathan, give him the last word. Even, he's, he stuck it out to the end in the meeting. Jonathan, that he, if you're not on the agenda, but do you have any uh, closing comments? Can you move that over? Or grab the mic?
Uh, yeah, um, I definitely, you can definitely uh, from based off of all the comments that we have made. It is definitely prominent the fact that um, the safety of our students should really come first, especially with how um, the situation took place and how necessarily the situation um, um, really escalated to the fact that it really, uh, there was many issues before and yet, um, it wasn't as many people believed, um, it wasn't necessarily properly addressed. However, I feel as if this, this um, um, of course condolences to the fam- the families and of course that, that um, had to deal with the situation. I feel as if um, it will really mark, be a landmark for as if like where we can actually grow as not only providing safety for us, for the, our young population of students, but also where we can actually necessarily see where we, as thi- this can actually provide a moment of unity, especially with the fact that we know that there is an issue and how we know that this needs to be addressed and how this needs to be brought up, especially with um, points made that this needs to be brought up to leg- to upper like legis- this need brought up to the upper legislation as well how like the unfairness to like necessarily with locations like Raymond Avenue, having a lot more safety in comparison to like these little kids who are crossing the road while these college students, it seems as if they're a little bit more privileged. The point is that like, this could definitely um, mark a movement forward to how we can actually necessarily prioritize what really needs to actually be seen in our community, even though that like there definitely was time before where um, where um, there was it, where it was before. Sorry, there was time before where it was um, necessarily people would usually cross these arterial, arterials where they would necessarily have to make the pillage all the way to um, just to get a proper edu- just to get an education at a young age. It really shows that like times have changed, that we are, that we actually are giving recognition to these time, to what needs to actually be changed now and how um, as a community, we can really grow in unity. That even with, even like that we are united underneath this one loss and how it really can really develop where we actually want to see change and where we actually want to be here together underneath the same idea that there needs to be a greater a greater interaction with how not only the safety of our students, but like their overall wellness. But that's my takeaway from it. Yep.
Thank you very much, Jonathan. Alright, um, let me start. I, I, I can't even uh, talk about it that well, but I, the latest at the Miller Funeral Home shows the visitation from five to seven um, Thursday, October eighth. Alright, and so um, any of you just, it, it's, you can check it and keep an eye on when that is. And I can't much to me is a hero. And um, I also um, went to as a, the report out, um, the Children's Cabinet had a community meeting today. And the topic was surprising because the topic was, how will we go react to the future of the cuts and every, and that's happening. And one large institution hasn't told the employees yet. Alright, but there's cuts coming down. And um, the message I brought from a school board is, we're committed. We need the community behind us. We have to work together. We have to look how we can share things such as for grants. Every, every independent finance person applies for a grant. They have to pull up their own demographics. A lot of charitable people don't necessarily excel demographic reports and filling out forms, so we could look at those. Um, there were, a lot of them were reaching out to work with us. We have to do a better job, make ourselves more open so that we give people paths so they can help and volunteer. They want to do that. And I was really pleased. And on closing for the board um, members, uh, back to the conversation, Maris just put out all their new words about how they talk about uh, diversity and engagement. At the meeting, people were talking about, they reviewed their application. It said DEI and now they didn't have the money anymore. Alright, and this is, oh, you'll start to see this occasionally locally in another uh, community. Say, yeah, I was lucky. We said we were expanding the skills to everyone and didn't use any of the DEI like they were a dirty word um, things. So I shared with the board and any of you linked to Maris. Maris has redone every way they talk about, oh, they community and they talk about the community, no DEI terms. And everybody around us in the educational industry is doing the same. And so that was a sad thing, but I, the fact that our community is resilient and asking for help and coming together to move forward was inspiring, just like a, a individual losing his life to save our kids is inspiring. With that, I'd like to say good night to everybody and not a motion to adjourn?
President, we have to actually go back into executive session, correct? That was my regret.
Kate, are you still there, Kate?
I am.
I thought as we were walking out, Kate may have said, do we have anything to go over in executive session?
I, I don't have anything new to report to the, to the board tonight for legal. If you guys have any questions for me, of course, I'm happy to go into exec, but I don't have anything to report to you guys tonight.
That's what I heard. I, I apologize. That's what I heard.
I, I just know that there were some um, agenda items that were put under executive session and we were told we would come back after the meeting.
Alright, then, well, alright, so we will go, uh,
It doesn't.
No, are there agenda items that we didn't cover? Okay, so with that said, well, uh, for the rest of you can leave and
Just to clarify, any board member can make a motion to enter executive session at any time. Uh, it needs to be seconded and obviously approved by a quorum in order to enter executive session. So if a board member feels like there is a need to enter an executive
Just to clarify, I, I was not requesting. I'm just clarifying the information that was, look, I'm a very structured, organized person. If I'm told something, I follow through with it. So I'm just following back.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Thanks, folks. Have a wonderful evening.